Good evening and welcome to the October 4th, 2023 Calaveras Council of Governments. If you could please stand for the pledge. So before we go on to the consent agenda, is there anyone that wishes to change anything on the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to request a correction to the agenda. On page two, at the very bottom, an item got moved down in error. I'd like to move that item in between 11 and 12.
Put it in order.
Yes, please.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Is there any public objections? Okay. So we will move on to the consent agenda. This is expected to be routine and non-controversial. Actually, I'm going to backtrack. Hold on. I'd like to welcome Bush. Thank you for being here. He is our alternate, our community public member alternate. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, we'll go back to consent. So these are items that are expected to be routine and non-controversial and will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested parties may request that an item be removed from the consent for further discussion. At this time, is there any board member that wishes to pull a consent agenda item? She and none, is there any staff? She and none, is there any public comment? Are there any online public comments?
No public comment online.
She and none, I look for a motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Moved by Tarzanelli, second?
I'll say.
Second by Alvin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, she and none. It passes. You're not going to give me a whole time tonight, are you? Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. This is five minutes per person. Comments should be limited to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda. Are there any public comments for any items not on the agenda? She and none in the room, are there any on Zoom?
No public comment online.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item number 10, which is Caltrans report. And I did not do my due diligence to check. I think it's Grace, are you here? Hi, Grace.
Hello, good evening. Well, I do have a few items to share with the group. For Caltrans would first like to congratulate Calaveras Cog on its Sustainable Transportation Plan Award, $264,000 for the Active Transportation and Recreational Trace Plan. Second, Caltrans awarded $41 million of sustainable transportation projects that will stand up to impacts of climate change. 20.2 million of that is in sustainable communities, which is a competitive program, and technical grants as well. And the remainder are in climate action or climate adaptation planning grants. Federal Highway Administration Electric Vehicle Charger Reliability and Accessibility Accelerator Program. This is a call for applications. The Federal Highway Administration released its call for applications under its Electric Vehicle Charger Reliability and Accessibility Accelerator Program to fund the repair and replacement of existing but non-operational electric vehicle charging infrastructure. The available funding for this program is $100 million, and the deadline for the applications is November 13, 2023. State Departments of Transportation and local governments are eligible to apply. So for further information, information can be found at www.grants.gov. We also want to share that the EPA announced a call for applications to implement greenhouse gas reduction programs, policies, projects, and measures. These are collectively referred to as GHG reduction measures or measures. The available funding for this program is $4.3 billion. A deadline to apply is April 1st, 2024, and eligible are states, municipalities, local government, tribes, and territories. And this information can also be found at www.grants.gov. And I'm sorry, Marlon, I just saw you there. I didn't realize you had joined. So hopefully you don't mind, I'm taking your action items, your talking points.
Carry on, Grace.
All right. Next, Federal Highway Administration released its call for application under its Bridge and Development Program to support large bridge projects, specifically those with total eligible cost exceeding $100 million. There is $9.6 billion available for this program, and the deadline to apply is November 27, 2023. Cities, township governments, state governments, county governments, and Native American tribal governments are eligible to apply as well. And this information can also be found on the www.grants.gov website. For our NWP fiscal year 2022-23, year-end closeout is completed. We'd like to thank this Calaveras Cog in addressing the comments as we were closing the year out. We look forward to working with Calaveras Cog in the successful implementation of its currently awarded Active Transportation and Recreation and Recreational Trails Plan Grant. Some local traffic advisories. State Route 26, traffic controls are underway from Vine Desert Lane to South Fork McColmee River Line for bridge work until October 31st of 2023. And this is from 24, 8:00 AM to 8:00 AM. State Route 4, traffic controls are scheduled from Darby Russell Road to Horseshoe Drive for utility work from October 4th to October 6th, 2023. And that's from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And on State Route 49, traffic controls are scheduled from Gunclo Road to St. Tenoir for utility work beginning October 5th to October 6th of 2023, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So motorists should expect about five to 10-minute delays or encourage to use alternate routes whenever possible. This work is all scheduled to begin as listed, but is subject to change due to traffic incidents, weather, and availability of equipment and materials, and also other construction-related issues. For the safety of our workers and other motorists, please always be works on alert. And for latest road conditions, you can also visit our Quick Map site or call 1-800-427-7623. And that is about it for District 10 Caltrans update. Marlon and I would be happy to take questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from staff about the list? Thank you. Marlon, do you have anything else?
Well, just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say, and thank you to the board as well for the time. Just wanted to say congratulations again to Calaveras County, as Grace mentioned, for the recent grant award for the ATP and Recreational Trails Plan. Very excited to get that kicked off. And I know, Melissa, I'm sure Gregorius has already reached out to you in that regard. But we do also have our next round of grant applications. Our call for grant proposals coming out for our Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. So you'll hear about that in the next, hopefully, couple of days or a week or so. But we'll be having our grant workshop on the 19th of October. So please be on the lookout for our calendar invite, and feel free to reach out to myself, Grace or Gregorius if you have any questions. And thanks again for the time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you, Marlon and Grace.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 11, which is county and city reports. So we'll start with the county.
Good afternoon. A few of the projects that we reported here to the Council of Governments include the RSSA project that's going to be going to the Board of Supervisors in the end of this month for an award. So we continue working on that one. The Valley Springs Safety Improvement Project, that was one that, at one time, we had a difficulty with the utility company, but we've resolved those differences, and there's a utility agreement that we're processing. There's also going to be a small amount of right-of-way that we're going to be obtaining from the school to get improvements in striping done right in front of the school. So we're working on that. We have agreements that are being reviewed and so forth, and they'll be sent to the school and hopefully executed in the next month or so. Wagon Trail project is the big one. We keep working on that one. The, there are certain areas that are available for the contractor to work in, and he's working in those areas. We also have some damage from last year's winter that we need to repair. The plan is to get all that repaired this year, ready for the winter. So if you get the chance to go out to look at the site, let me, you know, if you want to, let me know, and I could arrange for perhaps a little site visit. Last year, we arranged for a time when, after the pavement was laid on the newer portion. And a few of you came, but the invitation is still extended for, if you would like to come, we'll take you out there, okay? Something that's not so much related with the Council of Governments, but it's pretty good information. I received, I believe it was a week or two ago, the plan from PG&E for putting all the undergrounding work in the Arnold area. They have quite a number of miles of work. It's going to take a number of years. Of course, it's going to be somewhat intrusive on the neighborhood. We're working with them to make sure that they take care of traffic control, they take care of letting the public know, making sure that the streets are safe and so forth. We have our inspectors there to look at all of that. But I'm bringing this up here to you so that, in an effort to get that word out to everybody as much as we can, it's better that the public knows what's happening. You know that this year, there are a few roads that they were working on up there. Darby Russell, they'll be, they're working on Lightning Lane, Mustang. It impacted our paving job. But they hope to continue doing quite a bit more work in the area. And as I get more information and perhaps maps that I could share with you, I'll bring those to you and so that you could share. We're also getting ready here for, you know, the projects, getting ready. Our maintenance crews keep preparing for the winter season that's going to be coming soon. And if there are any questions in regards to any of that work, please let me know.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Oh, actually, could you just update the board about the guardrails and all of those projects that are happening around the county too?
Yes, we, well, in regards to the one in particular that's down in the Coppropolis area, we're going to be bringing an amendment to the CIP to include some of those projects, some of the changes to the CIP that was approved. And we're going to be bringing the updated CIP here towards the end of the year, beginning of January, and it'll have all of those projects updated. But we'll do it now. We're going to have an amendment coming now so that you'll see that those are included in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Are there any public comments? Okay. She and none, and there's none in the room. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, city? Yep.
Yep. Nothing major to report from last month. We did roundabout with Caltrans, curb gutter sidewalks. Those are still awaiting and moving forward. But we did start the replacement of signage around town. Street signs, stop signs, so that project has now started. And it'll take us a little while, but we'll update them as we go. And so that's kind of neat and interesting. That started, and looking for that to finish up.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for him? And any public comment? So we'll move on to item number now, one, which will be, what, 11? Which is the minute order. So I will turn it over to the Executive Director.
Thank you, Chair Follendorf. This item is the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Operations Budget Amendment Number One. Staff is requesting the council's approval of this amendment. This amendment won total $608,660. This is an increase of approximately $20,000 above the final that was approved in June. As the council knows, usually after year-end and reconciliation, we usually bring the budget amendment with the overall work program amendment. We haven't received our reconciliation letter from Caltrans yet, so I anticipate bringing the overall work program amendment number one, reflecting carryover at the November meeting. This increase of $20,000 is primarily due to the increase in health insurance. If you would like to take a look in the packet, it's page 179. And this chart shows a breakdown of salary and benefit costs at the top. And then it has administrative or general expenses in the middle. The increase, we went through open enrollment. We had a change to our plan, and we have a new employee. So that was the increase to health benefits. If the council has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The chair.
Yeah, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious. So it's only $40,000 for medical for three full-time employee equivalents?
Well, not all employees are enrolled in the program. So the two benefits that we offer are health insurance, dental, and vision. And then we have a cash-in-loo. So if an employee has proof of coverage somewhere else, they can receive the $400 a month of cash-in-loo.
Do you know how many full-time equivalents that 40K covers?
Three.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the amendments? Is there any public comment? Got she and none in the room, or any on Zoom?
No public comment online.
Got she and none on Zoom, we'll bring it back. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 12, which is the minute order approving the award of professional service agreement with LSC Transportation Consultants for the performance audit. I will turn it over to the Executive Director.
Thank you, Chair Follendorf. I will turn this over to Erin, our planner.
No worries. Good evening, board. The cog is required to complete triennial performance audits every three years. Triennial. Our last one was completed October of 2021. And on August 2nd, the cog released a request for proposals for a consulting firm to conduct our triennial performance audits for cog and CTA for the fiscal years 21, 22 through 22, 23. We received three proposals by the due date of September 13th, and a review panel of cog staff and the transit operations manager reviewed those proposals and scored them. And based on those reviews, LSC Transportation Consultants was the top-ranked proposal and is recommended for award of the contract. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions by the board? Pat? Okay. Any others? Okay. Are there any questions from the public? She and none in the room, are there any on Zoom?
No comments online.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 12, Minute Order? Moved by Tim, second?
Second.
Second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Any opposed? Favorite, the next one we've all been waiting for. Agenda Item Number 13, the Minute Order Adopting the Calaveras County Evacuation and Access Needs Assessment and Prepariness Plan. I turn it over to Erin.
It's me again. This project began in January of 2022, and most recently, a presentation was provided by our consultants, Duberry Engineers, at the August 2nd meeting of the draft plan, at which point the draft plan was also released for public comment. The public comment period ending August 31st. The consultant has since taken the comments received from the board meeting and from the public and incorporated them or addressed them as needed in the attached final plan. Cog is excited for the next steps. As identified in the plan, the need for a countywide evacuation plan. So with support from the county and city of Angels Camp, cog has already begun seeking funding opportunities, having applied for a Governor's Office of Planning and Research Regional Resilience Planning and Implementation Grant on August 29th with award announcements anticipated in November, so fingers crossed. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any question from council members? She and none, is there any comment from the public? Any online?
No online.
She and none, we'll bring it back. But thank you for all your work on this. This has been a long, long process, so good job.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I do have to.
Yeah, so is there a motion to move?
I will move to approve.
Okay, is there a second, Tim? Okay, moved by Alvin, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She and none, it passes. Next, we have council reports. I will start off with Tim.
We will be, again, having the laser light show this year at White Plains Lake. It will be the day after Thanksgiving, which I believe is the 24th. We're also been reaching out to the transit agency to help us with the, it's gotten quite popular, so we're going to need some little help with some transport.
Bush? Nothing?
I have nothing.
Okay. Isabel?
So we're having our Strategic Plan Workshop next Thursday, October 12th, from 11:30 to 4:30. It's at the Firehouse. If anyone's interested in attending, it is open to the public. And to piggyback off your note, I guess it's never too early. We are having our annual holiday parade the Saturday of Thanksgiving. So if you're interested in participating, I believe applications are on our web, not our website, the Angels Camp Business Association website. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Pat?
West Calaveras Rotary Club just had a wine, cheese, and olive oil tasting event. And next Saturday, the 14th, the Friends of the Library over there are having a spaghetti and bingo event. Both events, we're finding that ticket sales are sluggish, with most of them coming in at the last minute. But we're not seeing nearly as many people attending. The people that come have a wonderful time, and, you know, it's a good way to reach out to the community. We're not making much money. So that's it.
Thank you. Kay?
Speaking of wagon trail, I visited wagon trail.
Like?
Excuse me.
Let me get that one again.
Oh, thank you, Al. I thought I had it on. Visited the wagon trail yesterday with the Vice Chair of the CTC and Jack, myself. Kelly was there, and Matt from Duberry was there. It was a good visit. We have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00. Melissa will be there, I will be there, Jack will be there, Matt will be there, Robert will be there, and Deborah Rhimes will be there to go over, for us, play out to them as to why we should be on their October agenda for funding for the remainder Phase 1 in the wagon trail project. So hopefully, everything goes well. It went well yesterday. He immediately reached out to the CTC Chair and had a conversation that gave us the ability to have this meeting tomorrow. And hopefully, everything goes well. And we'll know, hopefully, by Friday, whether we're on the agenda for the October 17th meeting. Otherwise, we will have to wait until December. That's not really viable situation for us. So I'll let you know.
Thank you, Kay. Alvin?
Good luck, Gary.
Thanks, Al.
I have nothing else to report. Isabel, oh, actually, the Angels Creek Trail, we are moving into the right-of-way phase on that. Rather than that, Isabel hit on all of it. Thank you.
And I have nothing to report. Gaze, you know, working away for me. But no, we lost it. I don't have much to report at this time. Okay, we'll move on to item number 15, which is staff reports. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As Gary mentioned, the county cog and Caltrans are meeting tomorrow. Everyone has been super helpful and great in coordinating to try to find options for this project. So I'm excited about our meeting tomorrow. Staff is also working on our RTIP, or our Regional Transportation Improvement Program. I'll be bringing that to the council in November. That is our STIP shares where we program towards this wagon trail project. And as many of you remember, we've advanced those shares towards this project. So I look forward to bringing that to you next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne? No? Okay. Anne?
I have nothing to add to the report that was provided in the packet.
Okay. Okay, with that, we are drawing and going over to the CTA. So we'll get, what, five minutes to transfer over? Hey, we're now at the Calaveras Transit Agency, and we've got to do the pledge. Do we need to do it again? Okay. It's on the agenda. Okay.
Monica, do we have to do the pledge? It is on the agenda.
That's what we discussed in the chair. We did the pledge at the Calaveras Cog meeting, but we can be extra patriotic today. We should stand for the vote.
I think we can move to item number one. Okay. So this, we've just been sticking on the agendas, which is a motion to approve members' request to participate remotely due to emergency circumstances. We don't have any requests today. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial and will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Are there any members that wish to pull an agenda item? Okay, I'll move over to staff. Is there any staff that wishes to pull?
Yes, Madam Chair. Staff would like to pull item number three.
Okay. Pull item three. Is there any other staff member that wishes to pull an item? She and none, is there any public members? There's no one in the room. So move over to June. Anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve all of the consent agenda items other than number three?
So moved.
Moved by Tim, is there a second? Second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She and none, that passes. We'll move on to item number three. Executive Director, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Follendorf. This item is the Certificate of Acceptance for the property that the CTA is purchasing at 967 Highway 49. It's a requirement, because we're a JPA and a government agency, that we submit these certifications of acceptance to the escrow office. The minute orders that reflected the two acceptance certifications of acceptance, one for the easement deed and the other for the one for the easement deed and the other for the grant deed, were modified. So this new copy that I gave everyone this morning has been modified. And if Monica can help me, if you want us to read the section that has been added. Do you guys see the difference?
Yeah.
Okay. And what this essentially does is the CTA board is appointing me, the guarantor, to execute all the paperwork for the escrow papers and the purchase of this property.
Are there any questions on that or the modification? What, Gay?
Do we need to do a background check?
You've already sentenced me to twenty-five years.
I'll move to the side of the Madam Chair.
Okay, I do need to ask for public comment, so hold that motion. Is there any public comment? None in the room, any on Zoom?
No, none online.
Okay, there is a motion by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She and none. Yay, I can't believe this is actually happening.
I know.
Oh, my God.
I can't wait till we're all out there with the shovels for breaking ground, and we have our photo op.
Okay, next item is the regular agenda, which is item number six, public comment. Comments to be limited to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda. Are there any public comments? And she and none in the room, any none on Zoom?
None online.
We'll move on to item number seven, which is a minute order approving fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four Operation Budget Amendment Number Two. Executive Director?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item in Amendment Two is decreasing LTF funding and increasing STA funding. The State Controller's Office came out with a revised estimate for STA. So we would much rather use STA funding and decrease LTF, our local funding. This is a net zero increase. There's no increase to this operations budget. We're just decreasing LTF and increasing STA. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Okay, any public comment? None? None online, I'm assuming?
None online.
So bring it back. Is there a motion to approve the minute order?
So moved.
Moved by Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alvin, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She and none, that passes. I don't see Cynthia here, so we'll skip over that.
Yes, Cynthia's on vacation.
Okay. So next up is item number nine, which is staff report. Is there any staff reports for CTA? Erin?
I do not have anything to provide at this time, no.
Okay.
No, nothing to add.
Okay. With that, we are joined to November first. Have a good night, everybody.